Good afternoon and welcome to our last meeting of May. Appreciate you guys being with us in our council chambers and those of you watching us on our Electric City Television. Our invocation tonight will be given by Councilmember John Roberts and I will lead us in respects to the flag. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight to ask your blessings on this city, its employees and leaders. Please bless the decisions we make here tonight that they would be for the greater good of all our citizens and our community. Also, Lord, as our children prepare for their summer vacation from school, we ask that you watch over them and keep them safe and sound this summer. As always, we ask that you continue to bless our military, police, firefighters and first responders as they place their lives in harm's way to protect us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes of our May 9th meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt them.
First by Mr. Lockridge.
Second.
Second by Mr. Roberts. Buck Roberts. All those in favor, aye? Opposed? The minutes of May 9th pass unanimously. We have one item of new business and that item is request second and third reading of ordinance 16-09 to amend Chapter 66, Article 2, Section 66 through 36 of the Code of the City of Anderson regarding collection procedures for residential garbage. Ms. McConnell?
Mr. Mayor and Council, this ordinance represents the amendments that you passed at your last meeting. We talked previously about the fact that this was a community-driven issue and that the survey information that we had provided still shows that even though we've made good efforts at having the communications with our citizens about removal of the cart after their collection day, we still have about 17% citywide that are still left out on the street. This ordinance also addresses the fact that the existing law was written before we even had the blue carts as our method of collection. So, the revisions based upon what you passed at the last meeting, we believe certainly will help us communicate more effectively to our citizens the need for this. It will also improve the actions of our citizens by our being able to share these new rules. The changes that we made from the last time, we removed the fine from the utility bill and what's proposed tonight is to utilize a citation that's similar to a parking ticket. We've also removed the administrative fee in terms of having a review with the Public Works Director. We clarified the timing. This was an issue of at what point does a citation get issued after the courtesy summons? And the way we've revised this reflects that your first offense is a courtesy summons. If you get a second offense and it falls within a year of that first offense, then that would be the $10 fine. The third offense would come a year following the second offense and if it's within that year timeframe, that would be the third offense and the $25 fine. So, at any point along the way at the issuance of a ticket, the person receiving that ticket would have 10 days to request a hearing before the judge to explain their situation, their position and ask for some type of relief. If there is, in the end, going through this process, what we would do in terms of how do we notify someone about the citation, we staff will first, when they issue whether it's the courtesy summons or the ticket itself, the staff will present that courtesy summons or ticket to the person who's in charge of that property. So, the person who's living there, the person who's in charge of getting the cart to and from the street, will hand deliver that ticket. If the person who lives there is not at home or not available, we'll leave the ticket at the door and we will also mail the ticket to the recipient as well. So, that really is kind of the process of how we would go about that. And it would go to a person. There would be a person's name on the ticket and the ticket would explain what it is, the process thereafter. I think that addresses all of the items that we changed at the last, at your last meeting.
Yeah, I think so. I know we had a lot of discussion at our first meeting in May in regards to some of the things that Ms. McConnell's just talked about. I don't think we missed anything, but in between all that, does anybody have any additional comments or questions?
I have one.
Ms. Chapman?
So, the only teeth to this is going to be summones that if they continue not to pay will lead to a greater fine and a court hearing, I guess.
The uniform ordinance summons is, would be the end product. If someone does not comply with the ordinance and pay, then you're left at the relief point of bringing them right into uniform ordinance summons and bringing them into the court system, yes. In which case, that is the same process you have for nuisance abatement and those types of violations.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, guys?
May I move and approve this on third reading?
Well, second reading.
Second reading.
Second. First by Dr. Thompson, second by Mr. Lockridge. Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? It passes unanimously to second reading.
Make a motion, we accept it on the third and final.
First by Mr. Chapman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harbin. All those in favor, aye? Opposed? It passes on the third and final reading. Thank you, Ms. McConnell. Thank you, Carrie. Appreciate that and I think we got going in a good direction here. We have several items of new business and the first item of new business is request consideration of an appointment to the Municipal Election Commission. Ms. McConnell?
As you all know, we have three people who serve on your municipal election commission. We've had the pleasure of having Mr. Art call to serve on this three-member board, but he has requested that he step down. He certainly has appreciated the opportunity and we appreciate the fact that he was willing to serve. His term is an unexpired term, will end December the 31st of 2019 and we're fortunate in having someone who's interested in filling this position, Ms. Renee Fields York. She is currently or has just completed Leadership Anderson class and I think became very involved and interested in governmental and municipal affairs and she's very willing to add her name to this commission if you are so inclined to do that. We'd love to have her join the other two members, Mr. David Ford and Clara Humphrey.
Thank you. Her resume was in the packet. Any comments, questions?
I recommend that we give her for the Municipal Election Commission the unexpired term of Art.
Art Kaldis.
First by Ms. Harbin, second by Mr. Lockridge. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? And I'd like to, you know, if Art's looking in tonight, I'd like to really thank him for what he's done for the city. He's sat around our tables a lot and asked a lot of tough questions and he's been good not only for the city but also our community. Our next item of new business is request consideration of a referral to the Planning Commission, a petition of rezone 836 South Macduffie Street from R5.
826.
I'm sorry, 826 South Macduffie Street from R5 Single Family Residential to NP Neighborhood Professional. Ms. McConnell?
This is a piece of property that has been in and out of use over the years, both as a single-family house and as a commercial office-type facility. It's gone back and forth over the years. It is within the historic district overlay of our zoning ordinance. Certainly from our perspective, we'd love to see this property, it's vacant now, we'd love to see it put back into productive use, but it has been predominantly residential since about 2005. As you know, this referral simply starts your process. It would go before the Planning Commission at their June the 7th meeting and the neighborhood professional zoning category is of low intensity in terms of the land uses that would be permitted in this district, business offices, medical services, and you could still have single-family residential use as well. So, again, this would simply start the public process.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
First.
Second.
Second by Mr. Roberts, John Roberts. All those in favor, aye? Opposed? That passes unanimously to the Planning Committee. Our next item is request consideration of a grass and weed cutting contract for code compliance. Ms. McConnell?
About every time, every year about this same time, we entertain consideration of this type of a contract. Certainly this is a benefit to our neighborhoods who have the, I guess, who are in places where properties are in the Forfeited Land Commission or otherwise are not being maintained by their owners. We have 76 lots on our list this year that are not being maintained. Out of those, 61 of those are currently in the possession of the Anderson County Forfeited Land Commission. And what that means is that taxes are not being paid on these lots and therefore the owners are, have lost rights to those and they're, then they've gone into the Forfeited Land Commission as far as that responsibility. Unfortunately, the Forfeited Land Commission doesn't really have money to maintain these lots on any kind of regular basis. So, it's left to us, left to the city to try and care for these lots during this weed season. We have been fortunate in that Anderson County has, we have recouped some of the dollars from Anderson County for the Forfeited Land Commission lots. We received $12,825 last year, which, or for the lots last year, which gives us a leg up on getting this process started. We did receive three bids from contractors. The low bid was from A Cut &amp; Care at $16,409, DNS &amp; Sons at $16,632, and Crosby Landscaping at $24,710. The staff is recommending the low bid to A Cut &amp; Care. They were the low bidder last year. We were very pleased with the way that they handled this business, which as y'all remember, includes an initial, the pricing includes an initial first cut and then maintaining that mowing on a two to three-week basis through the end of October. So, certainly a benefit to the neighborhoods that have these problems and it eliminates the nuisances and improves the aesthetics. The staff would recommend approval of that low bid to A Cut &amp; Care in the amount of $16,409.
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
I have a quick question, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Harbin?
The 15 lots that aren't owned by the Forfeited Land Commission, what do we do to those lots? Don't we do something to try to collect some of that money?
We do. We place a lien against the property so that if that property is ever sold, we would be repaid for the cost that we've incurred in its maintenance.
I thought...
Thank you for asking that.
I'd recommend we approve a Cut &amp; Care contract to maintain these properties.
First by Mr. Harbin.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. Any further questions, comments? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Our fourth item of new business is request consideration of an ordinance to amend ordinance 16-03 regarding the Business Assistance Program. Ms. McConnell?
We certainly have to thank you all as a council for allocating $100,000 to this program and it adds, as you all know, it adds another tool in our economic development toolbox. As we find a lot of times with our new programs, we do our best to lay out every process, lay out all of the details of the program so that it's absolutely perfect and then when we actually begin to implement it, we discover it needs to be tweaked just a little bit because of the new program and something that perhaps wasn't apparent to us in the beginning. I think it's certainly fair to say that as your staff and also as the council, when we brought this to you initially, we saw it again as a tool, another tool in our toolbox for economic development, but we wanted to do not just for downtown, but we wanted to have some offerings for our programs that would be citywide as well. We're fortunate that as we've kind of grown into our economic development shoes, we had the impetus going in the downtown, which gave us the opportunity to do some new and different things. And this ordinance allows us to still focus on downtown in some of its categories, but the city council and the staff's intent in our full-fledged economic development role is to look beyond downtown and be able to offer incentives to our whole, to the entire city as opposed to just certain geographic areas. With that being said, one of the programs specifically was the interior outfit and maintenance and so we have adjusted that particular language in the ordinance so that it is, the limitation that allowed for it to only be offered to downtown is removed and it is available to participants citywide. We also changed one of the numbering in the Article 8 so that the numbering is correct. With that, there's no change in your budget, there's no change in the process. We'll continue to put this information out there so that people are aware of the program and what it can perhaps do to benefit them. We would recommend this amendment.
Thank you. Again, it's been stated that sometimes things have a way of having to be worked out. So, are there any questions or comments?
I'd like to ask, Ms. McConnell, how much money have we already allocated from the $100,000?
Well, you've actually spent no dollars, period, because the way the program works is if a project is approved, the applicant spends their own dollars first and then we provide reimbursement according to the guidelines of the program. So, you've spent no money, you've had interest in the program and you've had, I believe, Glenn, four or five applicants, four applicants?
Four applicants.
So, you know, we still have some homework to do in terms of making sure people are aware of the program.
Good question. Ms. Chapman?
I had to ask for the, kind of the criteria of how we came up with who would get the money and how much they would get if they were, if their projects were qualified. And I think I just want to, because I've had some people comment to me about, you know, what's the criteria and how we distribute money? And there's a fairly detailed scoring worksheet that they, I guess, the committee worked through to determine whether or not, how much it contributes to the economic side of it, whether it's in a, an area that needs improvement. There's just a number of, a glitney of items that they go through, which that's, you know, that's the main thing I wanted to make sure that we had and just want to make a note that that's available.
It is scored, yes. Good question. Any other questions, comments? I would, I mean, maybe just for, just Linda, just for how did the Downtown Development Committee come up with, how are we funding this on a reoccurring basis?
We did agree that based upon the growth, every, at the end of every year, we would look at our growth and 10% of our growth would be allocated back to this program so that it would be something that we could continue to do.
Good.
I make a motion and approve this, Mayor.
First by Mr. Harbin.
Second.
Second by Mr. John Roberts. Further discussion? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? That passes unanimously. Our last item of new business is request consideration of a change order for the James Street, Hunter Drive, Henry Avenue Sanctuary and Storm Sewer Improvements. Sanitary. Sanctuary. It's Rick's Sanctuary, huh?
It's my sanctuary.
Yes. Ms. McConnell?
Well, Mr. Mayor, you may have said that right and I think certainly when this project is done, the people in Mr. Lockridge's neighborhood will feel like they're in a sanctuary as opposed to where they are now. I will have to tell you that certainly this, yes, this has been, this has been a very, very large project for us and certainly for the neighbors who've endured the trials of construction, but it's also been a complicated project in that we've replaced water lines, we've replaced sewer lines, we've replaced stormwater facilities, and this last piece of it is the paving in order to tie the bow on the project. I don't believe we've, as far as your city staff, I don't believe we've undertaken quite a project of this magnitude before that has this many levels of infrastructure going and also that requires the coordination of so many different entities, whether it was SC, DOT or the other utilities and certainly trying to keep the neighborhood functioning for the residents that live there and our ability to serve it as well. Tonight, we have a lot, we have a lot of experts with us tonight who can help with this project. We've got Carrie Stonger, Adam Carter, Billy Boulger, we've got Jeff Caldwell, Joe Greenberg and David, I mean, excuse me, Ben Walford from Design South. So, a lot of people have been working on this particular project. Ultimately, we're probably three or four weeks away from completing this project, so the change order that you have before you tonight really is about the complexities of the paving itself. Our engineers and the staff did consider a number of different strategies for paving. You've got a lot of things from, everything from completely repaving to doing partial repaving strategies and in the end, what this all boils down to is the, really the poor subsurface conditions that exist out there to provide the right kind of surface to put new asphalt on top of. So, I will say that during the process, we did work with the Department of Transportation to reduce the, or to, I guess, better explain the fact that this is a local road that carries local traffic. It still does need to be rebuilt to the proper specifications and it also needs to be able to handle things like garbage trucks and the occasional concrete truck, but that because it is local traffic, we wanted the DOT and our folks to come to an understanding as far as what that level of repaving is. So, in the, in the end, what we are recommending to you tonight, and I'll ask our experts to help me out just a little bit, but there's a combination of work that will be done on Henry Avenue and Hunter Drive and now might be a good time for me to turn it over to y'all to really explain this, the geogrid that goes down, then the stone, then the binder and then the asphalt and I think I need to rely upon the experts to help explain that just a little bit more. The cost though, that you have before you tonight is up to $360,000 and that includes the materials, all the materials which they'll tell you about and it includes dividing that cost among your water fund, your sewer fund and your stormwater fund. It also includes the Design South fees in order to, essentially, we have to revise the drawings for completing these road specifications and DOT will have to approve them as well and Morehead Construction needs to have those drawings in order to know exactly what elevation they're bringing that road surface to and how to tie into the driveways and things of that nature.
Okay, we got Ben Walford behind us now and I'd open it up to questions, if we have any questions of Design South or even our team.
I have a couple.
Ms. Chapman?
I guess the first things, because I was asking whether or not all these, on the change order cost, have all the unit pricing been confirmed from our contract based on which items are not unit pricing and which items are just straight-out bids, other than the asphalt?
Most of the work is new work, so there wasn't really a unit price for that.
But don't, typically we have unit pricing for certain items if they're, if we're going to do additional work, like how much stone is going to cost, how much asphalt's going to cost, how much, I mean, not asphalt, because it varies, but...
Well, the asphalt was, we're using the unit prices for the asphalt.
Okay. Which I got that, but I'm saying for the other items.
Well, the stone bedding, we do have unit prices for additional stone bedding, but stone bedding is really just poured out of the truck into the trench with no handiwork, additional handling. This work is, you have to screed and compact the existing roadway that's in place, we'll have to do some milling and you have to get that level and then the stone that you put down with the geogrid will have to be handled. It's not just dumping out of the truck. It'll have to be screeded, compacted, brought to the appropriate elevation and then the road surface will need to be smooth, so it's not just applying the unit price. We did look to the unit price for comparison and this price is about double that, so the extra cost associated with this change order is for that extra labor-intensive handling for getting the road in place.
So, the, and just to, specifically on items 7, 8 and 9, when it deals with raising the catch, or the brick manholes, the catch basins and the aprons, we already have the manholes in place. This is just for raising six more inches to the catch basin, correct?
Right. Those are a brand-new structure in place. What we're having to do is more labor-intensive in that we'll have to go in and adjust the throats, all the tops of these and raise them. Once we get the road elevation, we'll have to bring them up and adjust them. So, it is more labor-intensive. It's not necessarily for as much of a material cost, but it's just for the labor associated with that work. So, upon looking at a dollar value, it does appear to be higher than...
Seems excessive, but I mean, just for raising it six inches, because we already have the catch basins in play, or we already have the material of the catch basin.
But you'll have to tie those in with the curves and...
That's right.
The throats... The throats into that, so there, there is, it's work-related, it's not clean work.
Yeah, it just, but it's.
It's a lot cleaner to drop a catch basin new in there and you have your elevations and.
Well, and the same would apply for the driveway aprons. It seems, you know, they're, they're basically two thousand dollars a piece and they're usually ten by, ten by twelve, ten by fifteen in depth and they're asphalt. It just, it just seemed like the, the multiplier seemed to be on the high side, but.
Most of those concrete, or concrete aprons down to the, the tie-in, so there'll be a little bit of mix of concrete and asphalt work to make that transition.
Again, I just, I still feel like they're on the high side. It just, because when we, it's a tough pill to swallow when we have a project that's, twenty-five percent over on a change order, or twenty percent over on a change order.
I agree. Anything else?
I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of like we're, as I mentioned, it seems like we're here. The, the one thing that I would say is that I've, I've, I've asked this before, I think all eight years I've been on council, is why we aren't doing soil boring tests? And I understand we did soil boring tests where the pipe was going, but when you have, when you're going to have heavy equipment on the roads, it seems like we want to make sure that the roads are stable enough. I just, they're kind of a cheap way to insurance to know what we're getting ourselves into so we can make sure that we, we're prepared for these large change orders.
We, we did do soil bores along the trench where the stormwater pipe is and we did encounter a mixture of, of different soils, but we had recently installed the North Anderson Waterline trench through the same corridor. At that time, almost four years ago, we didn't encounter any unsuitable materials because we were kind of through a drought period and what has happened in the process is, since we've gone through this two years of wetness, the alligator, you see the pictures of the asphalt, the water that seeped down into, into that subgrade has made the material unsuitable, so we have changed conditions based on what we saw four years ago when we had the trench exposed. When we trashed through there and saw that the materials were in good shape and we could, with reasonable compaction, put them back in the trench and compact them, we thought it was a fair assumption to mill, we knew we would damage Hunter Drive, looking at the pictures. Our, our plans called for milling it and then having a robust, a robust paving putback for the road and upon review with DOT, they let us back off on the asphalt. So we thought going forward, it was a, a, a good system to put back in place. In hindsight, boring would have, all it would have shown us is the, is what we've uncovered and you've seen that in the trenches, looks like pottery clay for lack of a better term.
And I, and I, I understand that it's a difficult project, it's just, it's like the more information we have, the better.
That's right.
And it makes it.
I, I recommend boring asphalt into the future.
Yeah.
For all projects.
Thank you.
Good question. Anything else?
I would like to say something. I've lived there for forty-five years. I've never been through anything like this. It is the most amazing thing that they start construction at sometimes five-thirty in the morning, sometimes they leave at six o'clock at night. Any kind of truck, any kind of caterpillar, whatever, was, the noise level was extraordinary. The area has been paved since the beginning of time. It was, it paved in two, in, in the year probably nineteen thirty. It has been repaved one time during that time that I know of. That means that there has been eighty-six years since it was originally paved and I'm sure there's some technical improvements that they have made in eighty-six years. At the same time, it's, it's one of those things, I brought a sample tonight of my road in front of my house so that everybody could see that it's falling apart and this is something, something that needs to be done to make sure that we don't have any more problems with, with that road and it'll last another eighty-five years. So in that respect, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the change order in the amount of two, of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to improve the roads on Hunter, Henry, and James Street.
First by Mr. Laffridge.
Second.
Second by Mr. Horrigan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Walker. Thank you to our guys too that handled this. And I guess, you know, the scary part about aging infrastructure all over this city, county, and this country is that things are going to happen like that and they will continue to happen.
We hope that we can last another eighty-five years.
Yes. Okay, administrative briefing, Ms. McConnell.
Well, speaking of infrastructure, we have some really good news to report to you tonight and, and I have to preface this by saying thank you to the council for letting us go down this path to refund these water and sewer bonds and, and really take advantage of the market conditions. Also thank Peggy and Margot and Jeff in particular for their efforts and the efforts of their staffs in helping pull all of this together. We did, we were very successful in refunding up to a little bit more than forty thousand, excuse me, forty million dollars worth in water and sewer bonds and we did that for the sole purpose to try and save dollars, save money by obtaining lower interest rates on those bonds. We were quite fortunate in that our financial advisors were able to watch the market and position us just right time-wise. We couldn't have picked a better time to do this. The best news in the world to tell you is that when we first shared this with you, we thought we would be saving in the neighborhood of two point three to two point six million dollars and in the end, we really almost doubled our, our savings. So ultimately, we're saving more than five million dollars over the life of the bonds and we met all of your targets that we set, met and exceeded all of those targets that we set when we started down this path. So these savings annually will be in the average of about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, which is good news for us. This, the good news extends to our partners in the Anderson County and Homeland Park. The county, because of our partnership with them, their debt service is split among our proportionate share of paying for those improvements that we've made over time. The county will realize two million dollars plus in savings over the life of the bonds and Homeland Park, four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars over the life of the bonds. So this, the savings are significant. It doesn't change the maturity, excuse me, the remaining debt life of the bonds, the, they will still mature in twenty thirty-nine, but this is certainly good news for the new bondholders and good news for our citizens and certainly for our utility system. So I think you can, we can all have a round of applause to say thank you for allowing us to go through this process. And, and during that process, part of the reasons that we were so successful is we reaffirmed our bond ratings with Moody's and with Standards, Standard and Poor. So that means that they felt that we were certainly in a very stable position, both the economy at large and your management of our utilities and the, and of our city as a whole. So good news to, to all of us and our citizens in that regard.
Very good.
And they do. They do deserve applause.
I guess lesson learned on that one was just being able to, the council giving approval to go ahead and negotiate and have, have that in place when you saw the conditions are.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Do that one again next time. All right, what we got? Upcoming events, right?
On our calendar, yes, sir. For May, we're nearing the end of the month of May, but we have on the twenty-sixth, the Southeast Anderson Task Force, that meeting was moved from last week to, to this week. We also, of course, have the block party Thursday night and because of last week's Friday rain, we've moved movie night in Carolina Renn Park to Friday, this Friday night, the twenty-seventh. Our offices will be closed on Monday for Memorial Day and then all of a sudden it's June, so. We did, would like to share one, one more thing, Mr. Mayor, and Dr. Thompson may want to acknowledge this, but we were the recipients of the Raleigh Institute and the Upstate Diversity Leadership Awards. They presented this award to the, to the Law Enforcement and Community Relations Task Force and we won for that in the nonprofit arena and of course, this is, we lovingly refer this, as Dr. Thompson does, to the dream team and our efforts at improving our communications and knowledge and relationship between the community and our law enforcement. And I think we've done a wonderful job through the year or year and a half that we've been in existence for that. So kudos all around for that.
Thank you. Having no other business, I would entertain a motion.
I have one, one old thing. There will be a dedication of the Watson Park, the new addition, it'll be on, it'll be on the, June the seventh at eleven-thirty. If anybody would like to attend, you're certainly welcome. This will be June the seventh at eleven-thirty a.m.
Looks like that park has picked up usage. Every time I go by there, there's somebody there. Good. Thanks for reminding us. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. First by Mr. Roberts, second by Mr. Chapman. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? We stand adjourned.